Welcome everyone. Kelly, can you share your screen please? While Kelly's doing that, I'll introduce myself. I'm Yvonne Johnson. I am a school board consultant for First Aid Educate. And tonight, we're going to talk about why serving on a school board matters, which will strengthen our schools, our communities, and of course, lead to better student outcomes. Then go to the next slide. So I'm gonna launch a poll. And let me go. If everyone could just complete it. Is everybody, does everyone see it? Okay, great. So how much do you know about the role of a school board member? Okay. All right, and poll and share results. Okay. So... We're gonna stop sharing. So tonight, we're gonna learn more about that. You can go to the next slide. We're gonna learn about what a school board member does. So I want you to look at these objectives. And I want you to unmute yourself and tell me what you would like to get out of this evening's presentation. Even if there's more than one thing that you'd like to get out of it.
I think for me, I would like to just kind of learn more about how to pursue a more active role or participation on the school board. And learn more about how to, you know, what that would look like.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I would like to learn more about just qualities to look for in school board members, just so that I know we're looking to grow our board. So just getting an idea of good qualities I can look for throughout my interactions within the community.
Fantastic. Anybody else?
I would like to learn if there are any graduated ways to get involved with school board activities, like committee work and that kind of thing. In addition to learning about the school board membership itself, but is there sort of an on-ramp that you all would recommend?
Great, awesome. Okay, thank you so much for sharing that. But so tonight, we are gonna actually define what the role of a school board member is, what the responsibilities, the commitment, you know, what it takes to be a strong school board member, who they're accountable to, and where they can find more support and training. So we're gonna go to the next slide. So what does it take to serve on a school board? Well, first of all, it takes a lot of courage to serve on a school board. As you know, in today's day and age, it is very challenging to serve on a school board because the community is, which is great, they hold the school board accountable. But there's been a lot of things happening. I think it really got more escalated during COVID, where families really were very frustrated with school boards. So sometimes, it really takes a lot of courage to run for school board. You also have to think differently. You don't want to be, have somebody on your school board that is just gonna go with the flow, do what everyone's done all along. They, they have to be a strategic and more of a courageous thinker. As a school board member, if you were to consider serving on the school board, the, the power is in your voice, because that's where the change happens, right? All of our voices count, the community and the school board. But change happens by voicing that, those, your concerns and your input to the school board and the school board member making change, you know, getting their school board on, their other members on board. You gotta be open-minded. You can't, you have to listen to learn rather than listening to respond. That's really an important quality to have as a school board member. Someone who's really has been engaged in school, you know, education, if you've been involved in your PTA or in your school somehow over the years, you might consider running for school board. Or if you're a retired educator, they make fantastic school board members because they know they've been around the school board, whether it's attending the meetings or contributing in some way, that makes a really good school board member. You want someone who's issue-focused, someone who's thinking about what are the issues and how they're going to work with you collaboratively to make changes. And thinking outside the box. Anybody who lives in the district, if you're in a district that has a nominating seat, then you can run for that nominating seat. If you are in a district that has at-large, anyone in the school district, as long, as long as you leave and you can live and you can prove that you live in that school district, you can serve on the school board. Okay, thank you. Kelly, we can go to the next slide, please. So here are the qualifications to serve. This comes right from the Department of Elections. You must be a US citizen and you must live in the school district. And like I said, some school districts, I, I, out of curiosity, if you could unmute yourself. I know, Margot, you live in Capital, and those are at-large seats. How about the rest of you? What school district? Kelly, you live in Red Clay, that's nominating districts. How about Mary, Missella, and Sanja?
I'm in Capital.
Okay.
I'm in Brandywine.
Brandywine, okay. And Sanja?
Sorry, I was trying to, I am in Apo, Apo School District.
Fantastic. Okay, so in Capital and Apo, they're at-large. So anyone who lives, as long as you can show that you live in that district, then you can run. In Red Clay and Brandywine, there are nominating districts. There's A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And as long as that seat is up, then you can run in that. And there's a tool on the Department of Elections website where you can put your address in and it tells you what seats are up. I can also tell you. You must be 18 years of age or older. And you cannot be a paid employee. So if you work for the school district, you cannot serve on the school board of that district. But you can live in Red Clay and, and, and work in Apo. If you live in Red Clay, you can run for the Red Clay School Board. You just cannot work in the same district that you want to run for school board. Can't be an employee because there's rules and regulations of the board. And then you have to have a background check, which is done by the Department of Elections. And that happens when you file and you go through a child registry just to, you know, and then once that clears, then you can run for school board. We can go to the next slide. So what is the role of a school board member? This is a big misconception. A lot of people say, "I want to be on the school board because I want to change everything." But the school board is a governing body. It's not a managing body. So you think of it, the superintendent, he handles all of the employees. Every employee reports to the superintendent. The superintendent reports to the school board. And the school board governs, so they make policy, they help write the strategic plan. They govern, they do not manage the district. So if there's an issue with an employee or, or a student, I'm not saying you can't share that with the school board, but it's up to the superintendent to determine who handles that. So it's a really important designation that people just get really confused about. They are a governing body. They're accountable to, who do you think they're accountable? Unmute yourself and tell me who you think the school board is accountable to.
To the public, the community.
That is correct. They are, that is 1,000% true. They are accountable, and the superintendent is accountable to the school board. There's nothing more important in school board governance than transparency. Having open, they have to have open meeting laws, which, you know, they're governed by our open meeting laws of Delaware. And they have to be transparent with that, how much money's being spent. So typically, at a school board meeting, which has to happen at least once a month, they share their finances, everything has to be posted on the website. And so there is accountability for the money that's being spent. But it also, there has to be transparency, where things are very easy to find. And policies, let's say you want to do something like, you think something should change. You should be able to go on the district website and look at what their policies are. And they also have committees, the boards have committees that are of the board. So if a policy's changing, they might have a policy committee. If they're changing feeder patterns, they might have a feeder pattern committee. Many districts have diversity committees, they have safety committees, if you're concerned about the safety in schools. And that's an important thing for the community to understand because these are committees that you, the community can serve on as well. And they work with the school board to maybe change policies around those issues. We can go to the next slide. So key, key aspects of serving on a local school board. Well, first of all, it is important that you don't have to know this to run, but once you are elected, you should have to understand Robert's Rules of Order. How many of you, does anyone know what Robert's Rules of Order is? And if you do, please unmute yourself and tell me what it is. Mary?
It's a, it's sort of a policy and procedures manual about running meetings with specific officers and agendas and the order of events and taking votes and all of that sort of thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? So Robert's Rules of Order is actually parliamentary procedure. And Mary's right, there are procedures in there, but it's, there's no, it, there's no, it's, there's no gray area. It's very black and white. This is what you can do in a meeting. This is what an agenda should look like. These are the way motions are made. This, there are, you know, guidelines or bylaws, so to speak, of what should happen in a meeting. And it's really important to understand Robert's Rules of Order. I've gone, I go to many school board meetings and I can see that many times the board president doesn't even really understand how to make a motion appropriately. And so it's important to understand, there's a book actually that you can read. And we actually, First Aid Educate has a great course that's recorded that you can take on Robert's Rules of Order. And it's really well done and it really gives you like an overview of what's important. Another role that's very important to understand is that one of the biggest jobs a school board does is evaluate the superintendent. It's just like any other job. The superintendent should be getting an evaluation every year. What are you doing correctly? What are you doing that's bringing, moving the district forward? What do, what are the challenges? What do you need to improve? And so a superintendent evaluation is extremely important and it is a huge part of what a school board does. Because basically, a school board evaluates the superintendent and makes policy. Those are the two main jobs a school board has. You gotta have the right commitment. And when I say commitment, it's you have monthly meetings, but there are other things, there are, there's things in between the monthly meetings. So obviously, every school board has a meeting every single month at least one time. But then there are special meetings where you might plan the agenda or you have special workshops where you bring community members in and you talk about strategic planning or they're gonna go to referendum or whatever it is. So it does take a certain level of commitment to serve on a school board because it isn't just one meeting a month. And then there's responding to your constituents. If you get emails, if someone calls you, it's important to be responsive. Being a strategic thinker is really important. You want to be thinking about what is, what are we doing? Where do our students, how is student data? Are our students doing well? Are they proficient in, in reading and in math and in other areas? But reading and math are key. Literacy obviously is the key to everything else. And if we're not doing well, what are we going to do? What are we going to change to get there? And that's being a strategic thinker, thinking about the things that are gonna improve student outcomes. Because in the end, that's what's most important, is that the students are doing better in school. Always, always being focused on student outcomes. And not waiting just to get student test score results. They come out like in August and the school year's already over. So having a way to measure that data all through the school year so that you can make changes so that your, the students can do better in school. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Okay, so common misconceptions, we sort of talked about this already. First of all, they don't run the district, the superintendent does. They definitely do not manage staff. There's actually should be where a proper school board goes through the superintendent for everything. They're not paid in Delaware. Some school boards in other states are paid, there's no compensation. This is a full volunteer job. So that's why commitment's so important because you're not getting a stipend, you're not getting paid. You're literally doing this as a volunteer. So it takes that real commitment and caring about the community and our schools. And members do not have to be former educators. The best school board members, yeah, there are great ones that are retired educators, but some of the best school board members are very, people who are very involved, you know, as a parent or as a family. Business people make good school board members because they're good with business sense. So these are sort of misconceptions that people have. Does anyone have anything else they think might be something that's a misconception about who can be on a school board? Margot?
I was just thinking about, we actually have someone that's joining our board that is a, a former student, which is interesting to me because it's not someone that I would have typically had in my mind as someone that would want to join the board. But it's someone who graduated, went on to high school, and then went out and got a career and is coming back as a board member. So that's something interesting.
Alumni.
Yeah.
Love it. Love it. I love that. That's great. Alumni is awesome. Anybody else?
I actually have a question more so about that. How about can a student that's reached the age of 18 run for school board?
Absolutely. I was waiting for that one. So we have some school boards that actually have student reps. They are non-voting. But once they turn 18, they can run for school board and be absolutely a voting member. They just have to be 18. So if you have a student that has graduated, let's say, high school in June and they want to run the next year in May, they absolutely can or they can be. Sometimes somebody vacates a seat, something might happen, like in your school district in Capital, you just had something happen and they have to fill that seat. They get, the board themselves get to choose until the next election. So absolutely, I think youth are, make great school board members because they've been students and they know what they've gone through. So that's a great one.
Well, the question's a little more nuanced, actually. I have a student interested in running for school board that'll turn 18 prior to graduation and the elections are prior to graduation. Can they run?
No, they can, they have to be 18 by March. March 7th is the, for this year. It's always the first Friday in March is when the filing deadline. And they have to be 18 on that day in order to file. If they're 18 by then.
18 before. If he's 18 before March.
Yeah.
But he just hasn't graduated. Can he run?
I, you know, that's a really good question. I believe he can, but I'm not 100% sure. But I will find out and I'll, I'll send you an email. Because I, I don't, I know you have to be 18. There's nothing in the code that says you can't be a student, a current student.
Okay, because that's, I've been helping a student who will turn 18 before March and wants to run it.
Oh, that's amazing. I will definitely be in touch with you about that because that's a really interesting concept. Okay, great. All right, we're gonna, of course, we're gonna move on to the next slide. Okay, so what are school board members actually responsible for? So first of all, division of the district, like how is the district moving forward? You know, thinking about policies that are gonna help support students and staff. That's a huge responsibility. Obviously, hiring and firing the superintendent. Anybody else? Any administrators or educators that are in the district that is handled by the superintendent or his staff. Your job as a school board member is only to hire, evaluate, and if you need to fire the superintendent. You also have to hold the superintendent accountable for student outcomes. If student outcomes are doing well, they deserve accolades. If it's not, then an improvement plan should happen. But that's up to the school board to look at those literacy rates and those numeracy rates and see where the school district is. Now, if you, if your superintendent comes in and they're, let's say, meeting a threshold of 30% and then a year later, they're meeting a threshold of 40%, that's an improvement. So they're doing their job to move in the right direction. But that's something that the school board needs to hold the superintendent accountable for. Obviously, ensuring financial health and stewardship. Understanding school finance is very complicated. And there's, school boards oversee millions of dollars of taxpayer money. So it's very important to understand where all that money is going. Most school districts have a financial oversight committee that is made up of the community and their chief financial officer. That's a really important thing to, to know. And then a report should be shared at every school board meeting to tell the community, the public, what's happening with finances. Ensuring that work is completed, that there are target dates. And that should be in a strategic plan because one of the biggest responsibilities of a school board is to work with the superintendent to write a strategic plan. Just think about it. It's a blueprint to where you're going. If you don't have the plan, where are you going? What's the direction? So that's important. A school board supports that work. They don't write it, but they definitely work with the superintendent. And most importantly, be responsive to your constituents. If you do not have the answers just now, I didn't have an exact answer. I get, I promise you, I'll get back to you. We all, we're not all filled with every single piece of information, but always respond to people and make them feel valued because they're reaching out to you and that's a big step that they make. They're probably nervous about contacting the school board member. You might not have the answers, but at least you could tell them where they can go. So be very responsive because ultimately, you are response, you are accountable to the community and the taxpayers. We can go to the next slide. So what are the qualities? We sort of talked about this a little bit. You gotta show up and do the work. You gotta be a strategic and innovative thinker. You have to be able to collaborate. Something I see often with school boards is we don't talk about "we" enough and we talk about "me, me, me." It's a group effort. There should be civil discussion and there should be a collaboration where everybody knows when to compromise. And when you leave that boardroom, you all stand behind whatever decision is made. Collaboration is a key to an effective school board, being an effective school board. You need to be intentional with your diversity, equity, inclusion. It's not gonna come to you. You need to be reaching out. You need to be inclusive and be intentional about it. Are you hiring educators that are reflective of the students they serve? This is very important that you have this. Some school districts have started diversity, equity, and inclusion committees. They've had equity officers, like this is a very important thing. Always, in any decision that you make, you should be thinking about what will the student improve? What is the student outcome going to be? And being an effective communicator, like I said, be responsive. You know, if you don't have time to check your email, then you really shouldn't be a school board member unless you have somebody who's gonna check it for you. You know, I believe that school boards should give out their phone numbers and their emails and be able to. If you went on to every single district's website, you would see a variety of different things. Some have contacts, some don't. I think they should all have contact because they're elected officials. When they come, when, at the end of the day, school board members are elected by the public and they're elected officials and their contact information should be available to the public. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So here's a little scenario and we're gonna do this all together because we're a small group. There, this is a made-up school district, Green Valley School District. There are three school board members who are consistently voting without the community's input. Student outcomes are going down and there's an increase in student discipline. Their terms are up this May. How, as a community member, will you ensure that these three will be contested with community-minded candidates? And what information will you share? So you have three choices. Will you mobilize families and communities, start attending school board meetings and share their concerns? Will you speak to three school, the three school board meetings, let them know how frustrated you are and that the community is with, with the way they are consistently voting? Would you consider serving yourself or someone you know who would be more open to doing things a little bit differently? So unmute and let's discuss.
I think there are, does it have to be one or the other or?
No, could be all three.
Yeah, because choice one and choice three appeal to me.
Right. Can you elaborate why?
Well, one, I don't think that any school district or board can succeed without the engagement of the community. That's, I think, one of the biggest problems we're seeing here, right? Is that we, we're, we're not doing more work to engage the community. There's this disconnect, as if they just sit there and make decisions for people's children, but we don't have the voice of the community which we serve. And so, and because my mentality is, is if I feel that there's something that could be done better, it's important to step up and try to do it, right? We lead by example, not by criticism. So that's why those two appeal to me.
I love that. Thank you. Anybody else?
Excuse me. Um, I agree with choice one and choice three. So I think you can always try to run and, and see if you can get onto the board. But your failsafe is always gonna be mobilizing all the families and community members to make sure that their voices are heard. I think there are a lot of times where community members don't realize that they can attend a board meeting. They don't understand that it's, it's open. So just educating them is important, I think.
That's awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
What I, I don't want to be the outlier here, but
Please.
I would, I would do all three. Because I, I agree with what was previously stated. It is important to have the voice and opinion of the community. And respectfully, we want to, as, as servants of the community, in order to be a change agent anyway, it's healthy to have the perspective of the, of the person you are serving. But then I also, I agree and naturally feel that it would be a healthy practice. Maybe not best practice. But it's a healthy practice to speak to the members themselves and let them know, you know, of some of the concerns. Not even concerns, concerns may not even be the best word. I would say opportunities, where there are opportunities for change. And if the, while I don't agree with the, how frustrated, because that's not the point of a school board meeting. You know, we're not, we're expressing concerns, we're expressing areas of opportunity or challenges or what have you. So maybe it wouldn't be in a frustrated way per se, but speaking with the school board members and, and voicing other, you know, letting them know, you know, of, of what could, where change could, could lie or occur. So, I mean, that's my logic, but I'm, I, when you put it into practice, it may be a little bit more challenging because, you know, I'm not familiar with the nuances. But, you know, I would say all three because the school board members, if, if they are unaware of the influence that their decision-making is having on the community that you're serving, then, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a great point. I just, I love that. But I think what I probably should have been clear about, the nuance of why I overlooked choice two is because I attend meetings regularly to express your opportunities for improvement. You, you know what I mean? So I'm there regularly. So if, if it has reached a point where their voting is, I feel is inconsistent with the needs of the community, I've already expressed it. You, you, you know what I mean? The opportunities and, and reached out for discussion to kind of talk about things. So I've done that work the whole four years they've been sitting. So, so, so yes, I agree, Kelly, we should communicate. We shouldn't just not say anything. However, I, I had the assumption, you, you know what I mean? Because again, I'm engaged all along during their. Because again, I'm engaged all along during their, you, you know what I mean, their tenure. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Mary said she agrees with all three as well. Did you want to say anything, Mary? No. Okay, so I, I agree with, I hear what you're saying. So I go to all the school board meetings too and I'm, I'm pretty vocal about how I feel. I think it's important. Um, when you go to a school board meeting, you speak in public comment, you're really expressing your feelings about how, um, something might be happening. And oftentimes the school board might not even know there's an issue unless someone's come to the school board meeting and shared it. And there's also ways that you can let them know via an email or calling them on the phone and letting them know. So all three really do apply. But I love this great, this is a great conversation because we're taking these, um, you know, these three choices and really putting them into action here. So we can, um, go to the next slide. Um, okay, we already talked about the outcome, so we can move on. Okay, so where can you get training, support, and professional development? So First State Educate does a lot of professional, we do these trainings at least once or twice a month. We have some that are geared towards school board members. So we invite school board members to attend. And sometimes we have them geared towards the community so that the community can attend. And sometimes we combine them together. So it's been very interesting and we do things on how to make public comment, agenda setting, um, how to read student data. Last month, we did an amazing one and we did it with the Delaware State Education Association on um, co, school culture and climate because there's such an increase in student discipline. So we provide a lot of training. Um, something that you can do as a, as a community member is attend your school board meetings because that, like Miss Ella was saying, you really learn the habits and what's happening. And then they get to know you. And a, a school board meeting, a lot, there's a big misconception. A school board meeting is a meeting held in public. You might stand at the microphone and speak and they won't respond. That it's not appropriate for them to respond, but they should listen to you. And then when the meeting's over, then you can get, you can, um, they should contact you or you should contact them as a follow-up so that they know, get to know who you are. So if you're not attending meetings, that's a really good way of, um, getting to know them. Um, we had, there's a lot of information online to get training. Um, they have, you know, there's different resources, school board partners, uh, school board school. Um, you can work with your superintendent and find out what tre, uh, training or support they're giving their school board members. Uh, there is a, a school boards association. Um, eh, they do, um, there's the National School Boards Association, they have an annual meeting. Uh, it's an annual conference. It's, you know, you have to travel, it's very costly, but they do provide school board members with training. And, um, it's important that school board members participate in regular professional development. Think about your own, um, career. You have to go through professional development. Our teachers, our educators have to go through professional development. Our administrators have to go through professional development. School board members should have to do it as well because there's nuanced things that happen, things change. Like early in the presentation, I mentioned about how school board meetings have become a bit contentious over the years. And how we, how you deal with that, that might not have been the case ten years ago. So it's important to evolve. Um, we also have these amazing podcasts from, um, former educators or form. We have a great one from, um, the former leader of DMA. Um, and, and his, um, his path into education. He was a, a public school principal, first a teacher, then a principal. And then he was the founder of the Delaware Military Academy and he, it's an amazing podcast. We have several, but that's just one. So that we, First State Educate at firststateeducate.org, you can go on there and, um, res, you know, look at all of our resources. We have like cheat sheets for, um, you know, how to learn, um, eh, about school, uh, making public comment and agenda setting. And, um, we, you're not alone. If you're interested in learning more about school boards, um, we will be having lots of trainings in the next few months because we know an election is coming up. We want people to be ready, know the right questions. We'll be hosting school board forums for any contested elections. And so we try to make it easily accessible. Um, we can go to the next slide. So anyone can serve on a school board as we've already talked about. So if you know family members that you think might be good, training is available for them. Um, we, every year we hold like a new school, once they're elected, it's called our new school board training where you, in July, after the new fiscal year starts and they're sworn in, they're responsible to make a lot of decisions at those meetings. And we provide a whole training on that because it's not being done from anyone else. They have to vote on a budget with millions of dollars. They have to, um, vote on leadership, what, what, um, what committees the school board member is going to be on. And if you're brand new, you really don't know what to expect. So we provide something in June so that when the July meeting comes, our school board members are prepared. Um, so anyone can serve a community member, as I said, you have to be eighteen, an educator, doesn't matter. Eh, you just can't live in the district that you are, um, you know, that you want to serve in because think about it, you're technically, as a school board member, that person's boss. Anybody in the public, retired administrators and educators, um, it's wide open. We're just looking for committed people who want to run and serve. Okay, we can go to the next slide, Kelly. So how you can you strengthen schools' communities and students' success? So these are just some things. So if you would just unmute and look at this slide and tell me where you think we can strengthen schools by doing what, one of these things or more than one?
I think fostering strong relationships between the school and the families because if there's not a lot of communication going on between the two, parents don't necessarily know what kids are working on or they're taking what their students are coming home saying, oh, I don't have any homework. Or, you know, if, if there's a good relationship between the school and the family, they'll feel comfortable going to them, asking questions, giving suggestions and that sort of thing. I think that's very important.
I agree. Thank you. Anybody else?
I think that that's a trick question because everything on this list is good practice, right?
You're right.
This, this, this list is comprised of, I think, all the things that we should be trying to do as a school board.
Yeah, totally. Anybody?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
What, what about, um, education or training for? Uh, I don't know, this might sound crazy, but, um, I have my, my social worker hat on for a second. And sometimes I run into parents who are not engaged with the schools because they're not familiar of either how to do it, how to go about, questions to ask, um, availability of maybe a meeting is not, um, sensitive to their work schedule or, uh, or, um, I'm not, I'm, I'm losing my words. Is there, would there be, what would, I'm wondering, I guess, looking at this list, would training or, um, not a PTA meeting, but do they offer, does school board offer in terms of engagement with the community? Like just one-to-ones with parents or just, um, you know, eh, educational expectations or milestones or? I'm thinking training, but maybe training is not the right word.
Well, Kelly's saying boot camp for parents.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a really great idea. So no, I don't know of any school board that does it. I did, like, years ago when my kids were little, they're both grown now. Um, our school board members used to have coffees at like a Panera or something. And they would do it on a Saturday morning and you could come and talk to them. Um, that's why a school board member should make themselves available to the community. I, you know, some, you know how legislators sometimes have a coffee and they bring everybody into like a local place and, and they, that's your opportunity to speak to them. But I think that, um, it's a great idea. That's why we try at First State Educate to provide a training for parents, families, and communities. So we're teaching them and giving them the tools, like you say, to know what to ask, know what's happening, know that you can maybe get it, an item on the agenda. Know that your voice counts, like all of those things. And so where the, First State Educate seems to be the only one that's doing those kinds of things um, for families. So I agree that it's not a PTA meeting, but I also think the PTA or the parent group, um, shouldn't be involved in advocacy and helping families understand their right to speak at a school board meeting and to share their concerns. But like you said, we try to make, so Zoom has been a great thing because families don't necessarily, you know, they might work all day, then they're running kids to this activity and that activity. And they need to have an easy way to be able to speak to the school board. But not every school board now is allowing Zoom in public comment, which is unfortunate. So, um, but I think that's a really, really good idea. Uh, a boot camp for parents. I love it. We'll have to think about doing something like that. Um, okay, so, um, and you're right, all of these are very important and they all can strengthen our schools. And at the end of the day, we're all here because we want students to do better. We can go to the next slide. So ask yourselves these questions. We're getting to the end now. So, um, do you care about student outcomes? Do you have the commitment and drive to serve? Are you a strategic thinker that wants to tackle the status quo? Because that's it. The status quo is not good enough. Got to be a strategic thinker. Are you a good listener and a responder? Are you involved in your community? Do you have a desire to ha, enhance and grow schools? If you think about these and you're answering yes to any of them, you or someone you know might be able to want to serve on the school board. And the filing deadline to run for school board is the first Friday in, in March, which I believe is March seventh. But this is important. Think about these questions. I'm going to send everybody the PowerPoint so you have it. If you know someone who can answer yes to any of these questions, then they can be trained and serve on a school board. We need more community-minded people serving. We can move to the next slide. Okay, now we're done. Thank you very much. We can stop screen sharing, Kelly. So I really appreciate everyone's, does anyone have any, have any questions or comments? Sanja?
Yeah, yes, I do. Uh, um, my question is, is so some organizations host or facilitate what they call like a CEO in training? Is there something like that for someone who is interested? You may have touched on it, but, um, I, and I could have missed it, so I apologize. Um, is there something of that sort? Uh, if someone is interested in pursuing, um, a seat or just, uh, is there anything of that nature available?
So I think what you're asking me is, is there something available to, if somebody's interested in running for the school board, is there something available to train them on what the role is and how to run and what's entailed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so First State Educate is having, we do it every single year, we'll be having something in January. Because the filing deadline is March, so it gives people some time. So right after the first of the year, we'll be having, um, and, um, I will make sure that you guys all get the invitation so that you know when it is. I believe it's, I'm pretty sure it's January eighth, but don't quote me until I look at the calendar because I'm looking at you and I'm not looking at my calendar.
Thank you so much. And I, again, I apologize if you already mentioned that, but thank you.
Oh, no, I didn't. And I appreciate you asking me. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, so, um, I am going to send you, um, after this, give me till tomorrow a copy of the PowerPoint so that you have it. And if you have any questions, and I hope that this was, um, a valuable evening for you. I really appreciate you spending your time with us and, um, I hope you have a very happy holiday. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me at yvonne@firststateeducate.org. I will put that in the email as a follow-up. Thank you.